November twenty first, right, that's today, right?
Yes.
November twenty first, city council meeting, start with roll call, please.
Daniels.
Here.
Connor Michael.
Here.
Lane.
Here.
Ritter.
Here.
And council member Murdoch is absent this evening, mayor.
Okay, I would invite you all to please rise, join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. First on our agenda tonight is our consent agenda. We have approval of the minutes from our council meeting of November seventh and approval of pay ordinance number eight sixty six. Any discussion or questions about anything on the consent agenda? If not, a motion, please.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion when we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? If not, roll call, please.
Ritter?
Yes.
Connor Michael?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion carried, mayor.
All righty, next item is called a public. Members of the public are welcome to use this time to comment about any matter relating to city business not listed on tonight's agenda. The comments that are discussed under called a public may or may not be acted on by the council during this meeting. There's a four minute time limit. Does anyone wish to address the council tonight? Step one up, Charles, and state your name and address for the record, please.
Charles Lawhead, three one seven six zero West eighty third street, and I'm speaking in reference to that and the property at three one eight six zero West eighty third street, which I also own. Unbeknownst to me, there's a sidewalk being put in front of my house. Right now, it's scheduled to end about a third of the way into the property and head up to the road, which I think is going to look very odd. So I would suggest that we consider extending it all the way across the front of the property. That way, my grandkids can utilize it to go to the east lower road to catch the bus over there, because that's where the bus picks them up in fair weather. I would say that in the future, better communication would be in order, but my, my main concern is it ending just in the middle of the property. And that's pretty much where our-
Okay.
What's the address again?
Lawhead, L A W-
No, address.
Three one seven six zero West eighty third street.
Charles, what was the other address?
Three one eight six zero.
Okay, I want to make sure I heard that correctly. Thank you.
It's on.
Did we do any public or any, send out any notifications prior to construction on-
I did apologize to Lawhead. I was going to, then we had some delays and then also the contractor-
Well, I apologize for that, Charles. We should have notified you well before the project started to let you know that was coming. And I personally, I don't see an issue with extending the, I mean, the sidewalk to the next cross eighty second street. It would seem to-
Oh, so back to here?
Be a logical conclusion if we-
Because the crossing is somewhere-
The crossing is probably closer to the driveway of Mr. Lawhead.
Yeah, right there at the mailbox.
And the reason it was there was to get some separation to the intersection if we put in a hawk, a hybrid signal crossing for the pedestrians, but probably at one time, we had the sidewalk going all the way to that road to begin with, right? We could, when we-
The initial idea was to cross here.
Right, so.
So be it. This looks like about eighty feet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kind of guessing.
One other issue that I forgot to mention is the house to the left, the old house, there's a sidewalk coming down to that tree. If they would tie-
Well, for, okay, right.
It to the new sidewalk.
A little bit further to the, yeah, right around that pine tree, there's a-
Yeah, the pine tree right there. It's just to the left of that pine tree.
Tie the h- house sidewalk into the street side.
To the street sidewalk.
That's right, but you can see the concrete right in there.
This is it, yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, you can, you just, you just can't quite see, you can see the edge of it, but-
There it is.
It's there.
Yeah, there it is.
And so the walk's coming-
Pretty close to the road, about a couple foot off the road there. That would seem like a reasonable request as well.
Well, Brad, can we talk with contractor in the morning and get a price for-
Yeah, we can. They haven't done any work. I mean, they have some trees, they've not done any kind of trees in this area yet.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I don't know if they're going to need to trim it. Probably.
Yeah. All right. Anyone else wish to address the council tonight? Please come up, state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is John Monken, two nine seven seven five West ninety fifth street.
Sir?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. May I say the spelling of your last name?
Yes, M A H N K E N.
Thank you, sir.
You bet. My family and I moved to DeSoto in two thousand and eight. We bought property in two thousand and six, built in two thousand and eight. I would note that our property is on the south side of K ten, and so my appearance here tonight is in regards to RG Fiber's installation of the high speed internet. I spoke with Mr. Baumgard a couple of weeks ago about this. Was told that the RG Fiber's original deadline to put in the conduit was the end of July, and they failed to meet that, and were given an extension to the end of November. We are now about a week from the end of November. I have not seen them working on ninety fifth street in about six weeks, and I was wondering, can the city council give us an update on what is being done to ensure that this is being completed as timely as possible, and if there's any action that whether citizens or the city council can have any teeth in the contract to get them back out to work?
Okay.
Yeah, I can, I can address that, yeah. So since the last extension, which was granted in October, I have been providing the council with kind of biweekly updates of progress. You're right, RG Fiber, right after that last extension, they came in and worked really diligently and had a lot of crews going for about a week and a half, pulled out and haven't seen them since. I'm in almost daily contact with the owner of the company and, and the business operations representative, imploring them to please come back to, to the city to complete their job. Contractually, our, our remedies really can't start until November, until December first, until that deadline is passed. And I've put, I've put RG on notice that on that day, I'll be calling the, their bonding company-
Okay.
-to start the process of withdrawing bond fundings, to get the areas restored, to get the project completed, to get it done, because they will at that time be in breach of contract, in my opinion.
Right.
Also, on that day, liquidated damages of a thousand dollars a day will begin.
Okay, that was, that was the root of my question. Thank you.
And so the contract is a five hundred thousand dollar contract. It required a three hundred thousand dollar upfront payment, so we paid that. There's two hundred thousand dollars that we haven't paid.
Okay.
So those liquidated damages, that two hundred thousand dollars will be used to complete the project, and we will, we will initiate that process immediately. We do have some obligation to allow the bonding company some time to react to the breach of contract, to see if they can implore RG to get the work done.
Okay.
Understand fully your frustrations, and those are the neighbors. I have them as well. And so really, our, I wouldn't want to say our hands are tied, because we could go out and do restorations and perform with our own service. We could do that. At this point, though, you know, I think we prefer to wait until that deadline's passed. So when I come in on Monday morning, December second, the first call I make will be to the bonding company.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate your time. I know that this has been a difficult thing for everyone involved, so I appreciate your time and, and the answers and any efforts you can make to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anyone else on call to public tonight? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on. Item three, old business, we do not have any, so item four A is to consider our twenty twenty sheriff's contract.
Yes, council, the twenty twenty sheriff's contract is, well, every year, we renew a contract. These are one year contracts, and it will roll over at the first of the year, so this is the time of year when we renew the contract for the next year. This one included as exhibit A to the staff report has been redlined. The only changes from last year's are the three point three percent rate increase from the sheriff's, sheriff's office. This is the amount, the rate increase that they reported to us early on, you know, last spring, really, when we were formulating our budget. So our budget for sheriff's services exactly matches this contract amount. In the contract, there's a seven thousand dollar allowance for overtime, but it's only billed if that's incurred. We do have that included in our twenty twenty budget. We also have a four thousand dollar contingency above and beyond the seven thousand in the twenty twenty budget as well. Beyond the cost, everything is as it was last year and, you know, really, for quite a while. We did last year include the provision of the sheriff's office in the southwest corner of this building, so that's obviously still included. It provides twenty four seven three sixty five coverage with one patrol officer for the DeSoto area, and we also have a power shift provision for another forty hours, patrol room, forty hours per week in our area. So recommending approving the twenty twenty contract.
Okay, any questions from council for city administrator?
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract with the Johnson County Sheriff's Office for twenty twenty.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Questions? If not, roll call, please.
Connor Michael?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion carried, mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next is to consider acceptance of Commerce ten tracks from Kent Frye.
Yes, council, a couple of weeks ago, Kent Frye called me up and asked if the city would be interested in taking ownership of two currently unbuildable tracks in the Commerce ten corridor park. These tracks are the ones that contain the sunflower rail spur just adjacent to Commerce Drive. When the property was platted in the nineties, they're platted as track A and track B. The plat doesn't, isn't specific about what those tracks were intended for, so there's really, there isn't any restriction or, or plating issue with them, but clearly, they're fully encumbered by the right-of-way rail spur or the right-of-way easement that the Army obtained in the nineteen forties for the rail spur. And we're, we're very familiar with that, with that right-of-way easement. It's, the wording of it is a little particular in that it is referenced as a right-of-way easement. It does have a clause that could be viewed as a reversion clause that essentially stipulates if the Army ever stops using that rail for rail purposes, that the easement goes away. So there's a slim chance, maybe in the distant future, that tracks A and track B may become buildable at some point, but we don't think that's likely in the near term because of SRL's recent efforts to make sure that the easement remains intact. And, and that was evidenced by the work we had to do when we did that, the DIP project right there just east of the traffic light. We had to raise that. We had to rebuild the rail up to that point because of SRL's sensitivity about the reversion. So in the near term, we don't expect that'll become available. I don't see a downside for city ownership currently, again, because of SRL's concern with the easement. They're maintaining it, and maintenance on it really is amounted to mowing it once or twice a year. That will continue. So I told, I told Mr. Frye that I thought the council would be willing to accept, accept those tracks for ownership. If you are willing, then we, Patrick's prepared quit claim deeds that only need to be signed apparently by the owner.
Exactly.
And so they get signed, they get filed. There's really nothing for us to do other than kind of your authorization to accept those as ownership. The, the tracks have not been taxed, as far as I can tell, since the, since the thing was platted. The county online records only go back ten years, but they're not taxed, I presume, because it's fully encumbered, and the argument was made back in the day that there's, they have no value. So the tax on them has been zero. Won't, won't be losing any tax by taking them either. I'll answer any questions you might have.
Questions for the city administrator?
I'll make a motion to accept the ownership of tracks A and B of the corridor ten Commerce Park plat to be conveyed by quit claim deed in the form of the documents included in the exhibit.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Lane?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Connor Michael?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion carried.
Okay, item C, discussion of non-discrimination ordinance.
I'll give a brief introduction, council. As, as you probably are aware, the other cities in Johnson County over the last, really, three or four years have taken up this issue in great detail. It's, it's, it's become quite a topic of, of public discourse in the other cities, essentially providing protections to individuals in areas of employment, housing, or public accommodation on the basis of gender identity or sexual orientation. It's pretty clear, most of the other cities in Johnson County have adopted an ordinance very similar to the ones I've provided in your packet. There are at least half a dozen of them spelled out in your packet. I didn't want to put them all, because they're all pretty much the same. And I've kind of outlined really the skeleton of those ordinance here on the staff report. Essentially, each one identified or defines gender identity and sexual orientation. And then they have a process, well, they, they indicate that it's unlawful to discriminate against a person for the purposes of employment, housing, or public accommodation based on gender identity or sexual orientation. And each one has a process where an aggrieved person can appeal, make a, make a claim to the city, and then the city has an investigator that investigates the claim, and if that investigator finds probable cause that discrimination occurred, then there's something of a hearing or a trial whereby first, the parties are encouraged to work it out among themselves, come to some amenable agreement. If that doesn't happen, then the hearing officer can assess civil penalties to, to an offender if, if that person finds the violation has occurred. Really, all, all of the, except for Olathe's ordinance, follow that pretty, pretty specifically. It's here for a discussion item. I think, I think the mayor's had a couple of inquiries. I know Councilwoman Murdoch has had a couple of inquiries about this. There are civic interest groups that have really been, been very interested in this topic in, in the larger cities, have become very engaged with those cities about this. These are protections that are not afforded on the national or state level, and so it's the local communities that, that have really taken up, taken up the cause. I won't go through all these, but they're, they're provided, really, it's, it's kind of a laundry list of Johnson County cities. I think every one except Edgerton, Spring Hill, and us, I might miss one, but that's really, we're, we're the last three, so. I'll leave it there.
And it might summarize well. I mean, we've, I've had several inquiries from, from folks concerned about this issue, as has Lori or Councilwoman Murdoch. I don't believe this is, unless something happens at the state or national level, I don't believe this issue's going to go away. It's, it's not going to, it's not going to resolve itself and just dissipate. So it's either going to take action at this level or action at a, at a, you know, at the appropriate level, which would be, in my opinion, the state or the federal, but I don't, I don't know that that's soon to happen. So I wanted to bring it forward just to get everybody's feelings on it and see where we stood and if we were ready to, to take on this and, and put an ordinance in place in DeSoto, so. I think with that, I would open it to anybody had any questions or, or comments or thoughts. Additional information you, you think that's needed?
What is, what is public accommodation defined as?
That's normally, under the federal ADA, it would be any, any place that's open to the public essentially. So that could be, you know, a public building or a private business if they, if they're open, you know, hold themselves open to the public.
Would this then fall to bathrooms?
Sure.
It can.
I mean, it could, it could.
Sure could. I think that that's all right, mayor.
Nope, were you done, Rob?
Yep, for now.
Go ahead, Dave.
I think that there, it's still going to be involved in the state and federal level. There's still some stuff pending. What I read the, this, this week on this, that I think we should hold off a little bit longer until we see some more stuff come down from the state and the federal level. That's my opinion on it, and I know this opens up a ballpark of things that could happen, like Rod was, Rob was saying, that is this going to affect this? Is this going to affect that? Yes, it may. And I think right now is the wrong time to do this, but, you know, it's good that we're discussing it, of course, and I think we need to hold off for a little bit. But that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Sure, thank you, Danny. Kevin, any thoughts? Kevin or Kevin?
Well, I guess my thought is really taking the lead from the communities around us and kind of getting ahead of it a little bit, too, rather than, you know, having something, you know, waiting on something we don't know that it is. I, I think one thing is that there's already a lot to learn from, because the other communities have debated it and hashed it around and, and have dealt with it. My feeling is to get ahead of it and to have some language on, on our books that, that we feel good about. My question would be really directed towards Patrick in terms of, there is a lot of similarities, and I think people are kind of learning from each other and, communities are learning from each other, and they're learning from the public debate that occurred, you know, from one community to the next, to the next. Overland Park being one of the later ones here to, to sort it out, and I think they did a really good job, you know, I just, I guess, and from what I've heard in Overland Park, I'd probably say, well, let's skew towards their language. I'm curious what, if we were to move forward with some language, if you have a feeling for which of the, 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 you know, the pieces of language are out there that you would skew towards?
Yeah, I, I agree with your comments. Kevin, as far as I know, I don't believe there's been any complaints filed. So as far as how, how these provisions work in practice, really don't have any data on that. You know, I know one of the concerns raised is, you know, religious objections and I would just note there, you know, there is a Kansas Act, the Religious Freedom Act, it's under state law, and that's something I know Shawnee recited that, you know, nothing, nothing in the non-discrimination ordinance would be interpreted as, as overriding the Religious Freedom Act. So I think that would be good to incorporate that language, just to make sure that no one feels that their religion's being put, put in jeopardy. The only other thing I would think, and I, if it's the council's prerogative to move forward on it, and I would talk to Mike, but I think it may be something that we'd want to, like many of the provisions, if there's a complaint, the mayor and city administrator would, would jointly appoint a hearing officer. And I think it might be a good idea to handle it that way rather than just running it through our municipal court. Our municipal court really isn't, isn't programmed for this type of thing, I wouldn't think. But, but outside of that, I haven't really, you know, I think we just sort of wanted to see what level of interest was at the council level, but.
Well, I guess, you know, I, I think a lot's been learned from the other communities. Maybe, mayor, you can kind of help. I'm sure you've been talking to some of the other mayors.
It's been a topic of discussion at our mayor's meetings for at least a year. Every month, you know, you talk, you know, Overland Park recently Carl shared, you know, Fairway has just had a discussion about it at, I think, their last meeting, so they're tackling it right now. I think Roland Park started the, the process of, it's just a little over a year ago in Roland, Roland Park, they had, I think, some of their hearings on it, but the last big city that officially it doesn't have one is Olathe. They did, however, did pass a resolution stating their support for a similar, you know, non-discrimination, but they didn't, they have not enacted an ordinance yet, so.
Well, it seemed like Overland Park, you know, they kind of, they followed some of these other communities, and so they, and they, and there was plenty of public, outspoken public in their, in the first time it came up, but I was really impressed with how well it, it sort of worked out. So I think, again, if I just had to say, I would probably skew towards first looking at Overland Park language, but Patrick, I'd absolutely default to, you know, you and, and looking at how these ordinances are put together. But in the end, I, I would like to see us put it on the table. I think it's better to get ahead of it.
For me, it's an important personal issue, because a family member is, is gay and it's, you know, he feels often, you know, that's, expresses a view often that it's, it's unreasonable that someone could be discriminated against just because of their sexual orientation. And, and it's not uncommon, and it's happened, and so I also feel that it's probably, in my opinion, it's time to move forward with this, because if we don't do it, who will? If not now, when? And I think it's the right thing to do.
I don't have a problem with the sexual orientation part of it. My brother's gay, has been for years. That's not the issue for me. The issue is the gender identity part of it, and there's multiple factors to that, but one of them would be the public accommodation of if that does end up being bathrooms. There are many people in this community I know that would not be comfortable with their daughters having somebody changing with a scientifically biological male in the swimming pool bathrooms. And I don't think we're quite at the point of, I'm not at the point, and I know a lot of people are not at the point of dealing with that level of bathroom issue as far as public accommodation or things along those lines. And I also, as an employer, value the at-will doctrine and the limits defined by the state and federal government have no problem with, and a lot of those do start to include the sexual orientation side of them. Some states do, some don't have no problem with that, but still, I think employers should have some level of freedom.
Obviously, this isn't an action item tonight. It's something that we're going to think about. And I, I want to hear Lori's thoughts on it as well, so.
I don't have any problem with moving forward. It's something that's going to take some time to build, so I don't think it's going to be, you know, starting down the road, it took somebody else a year. It might take us a year to get there, so. Starting on it doesn't hurt anything.
And I'm not really prepared tonight to speak, you know, if it was the whole bathroom issue was really the only big sticking point. I, and since we have time, I could-
Yeah, we've got.
At the next meeting, sort of speak to that to see if, you know, does that, you know-
Yeah, have a, bring a, maybe a fuller description of exactly what, what, what that public accommodation wholly means so that we can all have a full understanding of it.
And, and again, definitely learn from our peer communities. I'm sure you have a social net, you know, a, a business network of city attorneys that, that you can talk to and, you know, how did, how did you guys deal with it? How, would you learn from it? How did you resolve it? We don't need to, we don't need to invent a wheel-
Do not need to reinvent it.
That has been, been built many times.
It was not Overland Park the only one that addressed the religious part of it. I didn't see it in Lenexa or Olathe.
Shawnee was on it specifically, yeah. Shawnee specifically did, but unless I'm wrong, I don't think we can enact any city ordinance that would supersede state law, can we?
Correct.
So any state statute would still be in effect.
It kind of depends on how the state statute is written, though, isn't it? As far as home rule, whether they exclude or include.
Well, like the Religious Freedom, I mean, you couldn't.
You can't, yeah.
You can't pass anything.
Even through a charter or.
That one has no home rule option. Has the school district took, have they done anything with this?
They have.
I would have to get with the, would you?
I mean, when you brought in some of your Frank, some of the issue, I was just wondering.
I know they've discussed it. I don't know if they've taken action, or if they have taken action, at what level of action they've taken.
That would be good information to have.
Sure.
Would there be a time, Mayor, when we could get together and discuss this? And when Patrick makes his recommendations?
Yeah, I think we will leave discussion time at our next meeting, sure. If there's not anything else on that, we'll go forward then to item D. Consider rezoning at 95th and Kill Creek from RUR to rural suburban. Brad?
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. What you have before you tonight is a rezoning from RUR, which is the county designation, to RO, residential suburban, City of DeSoto zoning category. This property was recently annexed in the city a couple of months ago. The owner has a desire to split the tract and build an additional house on the split tract. In doing so, they need to rezone the property from the county designation, RUR, to, and they had selected the RO category. It's consistent with the area around it. The land use is all residential suburban. The areas in color are DeSoto city limits zone property. So this is, it's not a island annexation. The RO, rural suburban tracks are the sort of the lighter beige colors on the map. So it's a pretty straightforward zoning request. Planning Commission didn't have a lot of discussion on the item. One thing that we did talk about was on our comp plan, this area shown as commercial. The long-term land use does show as commercial. But changing this to residential suburban for the long term really has no effect on the land use plan because it's, I mean, the land use and the uses right now are clearly residential suburban. So if there's going to be a change, it would be several years down the road, and this would not potentially affect any kind of issues that we might have. There wasn't any objection from any members of the surrounding property owners, and this did pass unanimously at the planning commission. If you have any questions, I will certainly stand for any.
Okay. Questions for Brad on the rezoning?
Might just note, Lana noticed there was a misspelling on suburban, so I've given her two new cover sheets for the ordinance to correct that.
Good eye, Lana.
It's teamwork here.
All right, any questions, if not a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we pass. Is there an ordinance number?
Would be, wouldn't there?
Ordinance number 2480.
Ordinance number 2480, rezoning the said property from residential rural to suburban.
RO.
RO.
All right, second? We have a motion and a second to rezone. Any discussion of the motion? Not roll call, please.
Ritter?
Yes.
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The motion carries.
Okay, item E is consider resolution authorizing park and recreation bond referendum.
Yes, Council, so we went ahead and prepared a resolution. Keep in mind, you have until the end of December, we have until the end of December to submit this resolution to the county election office. So we have plenty of time. We just wanted to get the resolution in front of you to make sure you were comfortable with the language, particularly the ballot language that would be presented to voters. You notice there is reference to an Exhibit A, and that has to do with the notice that will go out for the election. That notice requires some information from Jeff White, the financial advisor, having to do with finance costs that will be required as part of the notice. We don't have that information from Jeff. Since it's a resolution, if you wanted to pass this, you could do that, and we would just get that information from Jeff. But really, just want to make sure you're comfortable with the ballot language. It appears on Page 2 under Section 2. Worked with Mike. I think we feel like the language covers everything. Obviously, the city will be engaged in an information campaign to get, you know, more detailed information out to the public on what improvements are anticipated to be covered by this 3,275,000 GO bonds. As we've previously discussed, when the city issues general obligation bonds for park purposes, the state statutes do require an election. So that's why we're proceeding this way.
Okay, so I'm glad it's here for discussion. I want to wait until Lori's back so we would have everybody available to vote on it, but I would ask that if anybody had any questions or comments about the, about the, what am I saying?
Referendum.
Referendum. Let's you ask them to Patrick now, or so we can, he can work on getting answers for our next meeting. Anything from the council on this tonight?
The only question I have is in the language on A. It says land acquisition to begin it, then it says property owned by DeSoto on the end. So is it to acquire the land, or is it to use the land we own? I'm just.
It's, the language is intended to indicate that the bonds will be used to acquire land, but ultimately, the improvements.
Would be on land we own.
Would be on land owned by the city.
On the acquired land.
Right.
Or land that we already own, like Miller Park. I guess it's to make it clear, we're not building improvements on Johnson County Park and Rec property or anything like that. It's, it will be City of DeSoto.
I mean, would be to be located on property owned or acquired by? I'm just, it was clarity.
That's not, yeah. If it's unclear to you, then it'll be clear to a voter.
Yeah, so let me work on that language and make that clear.
I mean, that was the only question. That was more the kind of devil's advocate of just.
What is it saying here?
I mean, I understand the purpose in that, but if it's going to ballot and everybody's, that's pretty much all they're reading. So that's all I had.
Well, we sincerely hope that anybody voting on it, this won't be the only thing they know about it.
You mean like the Kansas amendment to the Constitution?
Yeah, sure.
Where they were informed about beforehand?
Right, no, we don't want that to happen. So, you know, Park Board's going to work hard, and staff will be working hard on that public information campaign.
Any other questions, comments?
We're still looking at a $14,000 or $15,000 cost, but.
Yeah, yeah, about a 14, 14 grand.
Okay, so we'll bring it back at the next meeting then, and we'll have a full body, I hope, then, and we can tackle it again and hopefully act on it.
We'll have the Rob amendment. We'll call it that.
Thanks.
All right. Item 5, executive session, I'm assuming we don't have any unless we have.
Nope.
Negotiation updates, no?
No.
All right, advisory reports. Mike, what do you got for us tonight?
Not to steal any of your thunder, Mayor, but I did want to remind everybody the mayor's tree lighting ceremony, December 7th, that's the first Saturday in December. Typically, we start with a band and choir at 5:00 and have that tree lighting at 5:30. I think it's part of the band, maybe, that has the scheduling.
Choir has like a district honor choir, or there's some other choir conflict that the director and a good group can't be there until.
Yeah, until 5:30. So we're going to push it back half an hour. Other than that, I think it'll be the same ceremony that we've had in years past. Yeah, that was it. That's my whole report.
That's your whole?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, thank you, Mike. Patrick?
Nothing for me.
Equally brief, even more brief. Lana, what do you got for, oh, I skipped Brad.
Brad.
And everything there.
Okay. Lana?
I'm just going to say briefly, I was in Greenville, South Carolina last weekend for the IMC mid-year board meeting, and we're moving right along. So I appreciate the opportunity to represent my city. It's been great six months so far.
Okay, did everybody get their reservation in, Lana, if you were going to go to the banquet?
Yes.
Okay.
We're good.
All right. Danny, would you like to start us? Do you have any comments for the council tonight?
I wanted to thank Mike and the city crew for taking care of the trash issue out on Cedar Creek. They cleaned it up. That's a picturesque spot there, and that's been in the magazine, the DeSoto magazine and Rosa's magazine that's been in there, and it's also been in some of the art council's ways. So cleaning that up, I know it was kind of treacherous, and it was a sign dump each. And appreciate that getting done and cleaned up. It's great now.
All right.
Thank you, that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Kevin?
No, I discussed with Mike before the meeting about that temporary or that private drive again.
Oh, okay.
Just some additional comments, so he's going to come out.
All right.
Thank you.
Rob?
Two things. One, it is likely that I may not be here for the second meeting of December. Undecided, but leaning towards not being able to be here. Then two, let me find it for a second. Is there, had a communication today asking about if I knew about the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board? When they meet, is there a job description? I've got somebody that's interested, but they're interested in, is there like a job description? The details of that type of stuff.
Get that one out of the park.
Yes.
We have a great addition today, just today.
Just today, let's see if I.
So, but I do have somebody that's interested in wanting some details.
Boards, go to Boards and.
Scroll down.
Apply for.
Okay, apply for Boards and Commissions.
Yeah, there's an application, but is there like details about how often they meet?
So that, yeah, if you go under the Boards, that's just go to the.
And kind of a job description.
Well, we could probably, I don't know, do we have a good job description of what a Park Board member is? You know, I should have added that to the applicant, well, I would add one for each of.
There is a page on it.
So there's meetings, but.
So we could add a, that'd be good. We could add a, like a job description.
Meetings, just, yeah.
Yeah.
Brief description of what they do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good thought, thanks, Rob.
I mean, they were asking, so.
I said, can we get a form online so people can just fill it out? So we got that, that went live today.
Yeah, it did.
And I think that spurred the question today, too, was kind of that.
Oh, okay.
They saw the Facebook post and.
So what exactly is a Park Board?
And they'd be really good for it, so.
Yeah, great. Good, I'm glad there's some interest. Hopefully, I'm hoping we'll get, like through December, several applications, and then starting the new year, we can have a full board of body again, then.
Yeah, we have a BZA position open as well.
Yeah, oh, I didn't have that on the phone. Oh, I did, didn't I?
I think so, I think we had it.
That was only two things.
Okay, thanks, Rob. Kevin?
I have no report.
All right. You know, I had something on my mind. It left me somewhere between Rob and Kevin. I just thank everybody for coming, the good discussion tonight, and would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? All right.